Just a corner of the page, it was so large.
Yep.
All set?
All set?
Knocking, knocking. Calling to order the Monday, September 21st, 2015 regular meeting of the 35th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Here.
Councilmember Edgar?
Present.
Councilmember Kadekko?
Here.
Councilmember Stedman?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim Turbrak?
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer?
Here.
First order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Edgar?
Mr. Mayor.
Are there any changes, additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. On the regular agenda, item number five, motion number M-5915, that should read, "The Purchase of a 2016 Ford."
And is that change amenable to the maker of the motion?
Yes, it is.
And to the secondor?
Yes.
Yes. Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Saying nothing else, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now I see Deacon Brian Carroll is with us. Would you please stand for the invocation?
Oh, good and gracious God, we give you thanks for all the good gifts you give us. We thank you for the gift of seasons, as we enter into the fall season now, arguably the prettiest season in our beloved state here. It's a time of new energy for us all. The Jewish community have just celebrated their new year. We thank you for the fall, which we look forward to. And we also ask you that we be, during this council meeting, we be conscious to your spirit that dwells within us and between us, so that the discussions and the decisions may be for the building up of this community here in the city of Berkeley. And let us all say, amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the citizens of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a department of the city or a member of city staff, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being discussed. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to, I'd like to introduce you to our new communications coordinator, Chelsea Humphrey. And I know some of you have met her, but I wanted her to meet the public and also meet the city council in its entirety. She is just beginning her second week of work with the city of Berkeley, and we're very pleased with her work so far, and she's got a lot to do. Please know that she is a resident of the city of Berkeley, and she graduated, I believe, from Central Michigan University, and also she comes to us as a former employee for Channel Four. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Chelsea, so that she can say a few words to honor, if that's okay?
Very good.
Thank you. First of all, I just would like to say thank you so much for this wonderful opportunity. I'm very excited to be here. I'm honored to work for a city that's been nationally recognized on multiple levels, but also honored to work for the city that I've called home for over 15 years. I'm excited for the future, and I look forward to working with all of you to progress and evolve, especially when it comes to communications with the residents. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Chelsea. We're glad you have joined our staff.
Thank you.
You're most welcome.
I'm James Jeffrey Tong, and I'm a 72-year-old resident of Berkeley, Michigan, my entire life. I'm vice chair of the Berkeley Historical Committee, and we wanted to let the council and the people of Berkeley know about a major addition to the collection in the Berkeley Historical Museum. Everybody who grew up in Berkeley has fond memories of the Berkeley Theater that opened in 1941 and sadly closed in 1993. We've recently been given the artifacts from the theater, and they are now on display in the museum, the original bright red doors and the lighting fixtures and some more of the seats from the theater. And they've been brought to the museum, they've been installed, and we're very happy to keep them here permanently for the people of Berkeley to enjoy. We really want to thank the Public Works Department. I don't know if the people in Berkeley understand how great these people are. They went to the Rite Aid, they took them down, they brought them over, they installed them. They were unbelievably professional, and we deeply appreciate all the help they've given us over the years. And we thank the manager's office and the city planner for making the arrangements. So we are going to keep the museum open after the meeting tonight, and we're hoping the council and everybody here will walk down for a few minutes and see the new display. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
My name is Ellen Brison Price, and these are three of my neighbors who have come to speak with you on behalf of our entire block. What you have in front of Councilman Kadekko is a petition that we've put together because we have been trying to solve a problem for over four years now. If you don't mind, I'm just going to read our brief statement to you. The property located at 2727 Buckingham has been in a state of disrepair and abandonment for over four years now. Many neighbors have come to City Hall over these years to voice concerns and complaints about rats, birds, and other animals going in and out of the house and all around the property. The property currently has weeds growing over six feet high around it and is strewn with broken materials, so that when the lawn is mowed only about once or twice a month, only a portion is maintained. The property has a new garage, which has not finished inspection, and a front walkway that it was added in 2014, but otherwise is in deplorable condition. Initially, that owner did some demolition of the interior of the house, but that has been untouched in years. To the best of our recollection, the house has not been attended to after the flood of 2014 that impacted so many of us. Our block was very heavily hit, including flooding and over three feet of sewage and water. To the best of our recollection, the, I'm sorry, the snow has never been cleared from the sidewalk, creating apparel for the U.S. mail carriers who have to go into the street to get around the property, schoolchildren that come back and forth from Avery Day Anderson, and residents who walk on a daily basis. Despite our many requests and glaringly obvious abandonment by the owner, the property has not been labeled abandoned by the city as have other houses in less deplorable condition. Neighbors have had to endure the sight and sound of rats killing chipmunks in open view of their porches. We, the understand, neighbors take pride in our property. We look out and care for our neighbors. We come together to support each other in times of crisis and even in times of great happiness, when they all attended my wedding to the man across the street. We consider this a crisis. Between the lack of maintenance, unsafe condition, and vermin, this property is dangerous. Having this house on our block devaluates all of our properties. We request that the property owner, who we understand is called 2727 LLC, either be held accountable immediately to remediate the property to a sanitary and safe living condition, or that the city deem it to be abandoned to make way for its sale or demolition.
I had, I'm Tammy Phillips. I live in Berkeley. I've lived in Berkeley for 28, well, on this block for 28 years. I've lived in Berkeley all my life, which has been 51 years. We were told that this particular person was supposed to have some things done by today. He has a number of violations against him with this house, and including the weeds. My husband did see somebody come over today and pull some of the larger weeds, but never towed them away, never threw them away, just threw them down in the yard. And he did spray something in the front yard and along the south side of the yard. But nothing else has been done to the house since then. It's just, it's not right. If any of us kept our houses in the condition that this particular house is in, we would have been called out a long time ago to fix it. And I don't understand why this man has not. And it's just not right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Galene Tonkovich, I live at 2769 Buckingham. I also own 2755 Buckingham, which is a rental property. I have lived on Buckingham for 45 years, and when this person purchased the home, we were happy to see that it was purchased. And we did talk to the gentleman, my husband and I, as to what he planned to do with this property. We were told personally by him that he was going to fix the house up and move into it. Well, that has obviously not happened, and the house has continued to go downhill. Periodically, we have done snow removal down the center of the sidewalks, just to try to help our male person and the children. But he, this man comes at nighttime, he's the neighbor that lives directly next door, isn't here tonight, but I'm told by her that he spends 15, 20 minutes and he's gone. He has been selling items out of the garage, what, the new garage, what has been stored in there. We have no contact with him, because he comes and goes so fast, and he goes at nighttime. When I have come up and inquired about it, I was originally told that the house was a hut house and the city of Berkeley couldn't do anything about it. Well, the last time, when I paid my taxes, I checked and it was informed it was an LLC, which is also what my property, my rental property is. So I may maintain my property, and I want him to maintain his.
My name is Sally Moran. I live at 2678 Buckingham. This is not the only empty dwelling on our block. We have had up to three in the same amount of time. Every other empty house has been maintained, both summer and winter. You would never know they were empty. I've lived next door to one that was empty for nearly five years, had no complaints. This is an eyesore, it's down the block, and it stands out like a sore thumb. I've been a resident of Berkeley for 28 years, and frankly, I came out of the city of Detroit, and I look across the street and it reminds me of where I came from. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
My name is Tom Bustance, and I'm the commander of the Berkeley American Legion Post 374. And I'm here tonight to give you an update on our post and where we stand. I know you've all been reading about us for six months, in our plight, trying to raise money. Well, we have raised, as of today, eighty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Our goal, we're trying to, we probably need to raise another hundred, excuse me, another eighty-five thousand to pay off liens. But here's where we stand right now. Due to the graciousness of Chase Bank, who's been fantastic, they wrote off a hundred and seventy thousand dollars and gave us a loan payment to pay off our mortgage of seventy-five thousand. With the eighty-five thousand dollars we raised, we paid them their seventy-five thousand. We have ten thousand now to apply towards some of the liens that we have outstanding with the state, the feds, and the county. And we're working on those. So we're in good shape. We now, we now have the mortgage payment papers, that we will have a mortgage burning party on the 26th. And you're all invited to attend that, because this was a community effort. This wasn't just a bunch of legionnaires out raising money. It was a whole community of businesspeople, residents, members, everybody, you know, rolling up their sleeves and working together to make this happen. And it's a proud moment for me to stand here, because the Berkeley American Legion is one of the finest American legions I know in the state of Michigan, one of the largest, with the largest membership. And to see it go down the tubes after all these years would have been a heartbreaker. So as the commander, I thank everybody here that backed us and got behind us to make this happen, so that we can continue on with the tradition that we've had for 75 years of honoring veterans, taking care of veterans. And you're all invited to stop by. It's going to be at four o'clock, we're going to burn the mortgage at five. And that'll be a happy day for us, because, like I say, we now own the property, which we had an offer on it when we were putting it up for sale, because we had to do something. We had an offer of four hundred and twenty-five thousand. So that's, we've got a lot of equity in that building, and we can certainly borrow money to pay off the liens to keep us going. And I thank everybody here sincerely, and I salute you all for your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander.
That's Saturday, this coming Saturday?
Yes, this coming Saturday at four o'clock.
Okay.
So that's all we have coming for public comments? Very good. So we move on then to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular 35th city council meeting on Monday, August 17th, 2015. Warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1294. Resolution number R-2615. Matter of recognizing StanTech for their volunteer efforts in the city of Berkeley. Proclamation number P-0815. Matter of proclaiming September 2015 as Histocytosis Awareness Month. Resolution number R-2715. Matter of accepting a gift from the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library to the city of Berkeley. Proclamation number P-0915. Matter celebrating the 20th anniversary of the Tuesday afternoon book club of the Berkeley Public Library. And ordinance number O-0415. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 34 charitable solicitations of the Berkeley City Code to modify solicitation permit application requirements.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve. Support.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekko, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. And now we move along to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, we always need to call the roll on that. Now, please call the roll on the consent agenda.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we can safely move on to the regular agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Mayor Pro-Tim Turbrak to read R-2615.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing StanTech for their volunteer efforts in the city of Berkeley. Whereas StanTech Architecture, a local architecture and engineering firm in the city of Berkeley, partnered with the city's Parks and Recreation Department for their annual International Community Day project in the city. And whereas more than 7,300 StanTech employees worldwide volunteered at community organizations across the world on Tuesday, September 15th, to give back to communities that support their clients, company, and employees. And whereas the promise of StanTech is to design with community in mind, and Berkeley Parks and Recreation works to create community through people, parks, and programs. Therefore, this volunteer effort was a natural and successful fit for StanTech's Community Day. Whereas on Tuesday, September 15th, more than 60 StanTech employees worked at seven city parks, trimming 550 feet of fence line, hauled 10 bags of trash, secured one retaining wall, cleaned 20 place structures, amassed 14 overflowing truckloads of debris, and spread nine truckloads of dirt. And whereas the work done by StanTech will keep our parks cleaner, more user-friendly, and safer for the community to enjoy. Now, therefore, the city of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby recognizes StanTech Architecture and Engineering for their volunteer efforts in Berkeley Parks during their International Community Day 2015. In Section 2, the Berkeley City Council also hereby recognizes Dan Simpson, Maintenance Leader for Berkeley Parks and Recreation, for his sound, energetic, well-planned, and executed management of Community Day with StanTech. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, September 21st, 2015, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Sessom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may ask these following individuals to please come close and perhaps say a little something on this. Margie Simmons, Justin Weber, and Mike Baker. They do have a presentation they'd like to share with you, Council.
Okay.
If you don't mind, we could turn off the lights. We're so grateful for all your help and wonderful, wonderful work here, and I know that we'd like to share your work with the Mayor City Council, of course, with our community. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, City Council, and Mr. Mayor, for having us here. I get to represent 61 great employees. I'm very honored to be in front of the rest of my group here and 7,300 employees worldwide. So one of our key items was, we want our name upon the marquees, so we were kind of excited about that. It was the first time, so that was one of the key things. So we let off with that. Best way to put this, may hands make light work. Without Dan and Teresa, we couldn't do this. We had to have them. Sixty-one volunteers joined in. Seven parks, Merchants Park, Community Center, JC's, Kiwanis Totlot, Pangill Elementary, Angel Elementary, and Harvard Tennis Court. And we cleaned place structures.
That's the cleanest slide in Berkeley now.
We trimmed fence line. We had fun. We fixed a retaining barrier. We hauled debris. We leveled out tripping hazards. We worked hard. But we also had fun. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nicely done. Good job. Find the cable. Thank you. Terrific presentation.
That was great.
Great job. Appreciate all your help.
Thank you very much. Major contribution to our parks and the quality of our lives. And now we move along to the next proclamation, and I've asked Councilmember Kadekko to read Proclamation O-815.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Sprinkle, would you like to come up to the podium? You'll have an opportunity to say a few words in a few moments, but I do want everyone to know that this disease has stricken a very dear family member of hers. She'll talk about it in a few moments, but I'll read the proclamation first. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming September 2015 as Histocytosis Awareness Month. Whereas histiocytic disorders are considered orphan diseases, meaning they affect less than 200,000 people, both children and adults, per year in the United States. And whereas these diseases occur because of the overproduction of a certain cell in the body, wherever these cells accumulate, they cause cancer-like damage. And whereas although these diseases are not thought of to be cancer, a cancer, the pain and suffering of patients can be just as severe as more prevalent diseases, which receive a high priority for federal research funding. And whereas patients with these diseases can suffer damage to their central nervous system, brain, skin, bones, liver, lungs, and spleen. And whereas there is no known cure, and the goal of treatment is to cause the disease to go into remission, therefore increased funding by National Institute of Health is crucial to facilitating research into these diseases. And whereas the Histocytosis Association is the only nonprofit organization in the world that is working to raise awareness, provide educational and emotional support to patients and families, and is funding peer-reviewed research leading to better treatments and a cure, the Histocytosis Association has designated the month of September as Histocytosis Awareness Month. Therefore, the city of Berkeley hereby proclaims the month of September 2015 as Histocytosis Awareness Month in the city of Berkeley. The city of Berkeley gives special recognition to the family and friends who have worked tirelessly to enable the Histocytosis Association to raise awareness about the diseases, provide educational and support programs, and fund peer-reviewed research of the disease. Proclaim this 21st day of September 2015 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank the mayor and the council members and the administration for the approval of the proclamation proclaiming September as Histocytosis Awareness Month. I would like to personally thank Alan Kadekko for taking upon himself and helping me to get started in this process. And yes, this issue is very important to my family. Our granddaughter was diagnosed in 2013 at the age of three with Langerhans cell histocytosis. She underwent intensive chemotherapy and steroid treatment for one year and is currently in remission. I'm going to probably repeat a lot of what Alan just said, but just to give you a little bit more insight of what histocytosis is, is it is a histiocytic disorder, commonly referred to as histocytosis, and is considered an orphan disease, because there are less than 200,000 people per year that are affected by it. Thus, they do not receive the substantial government funding for research. This leads us to, this leads the increased needs to build awareness. So that's where I come in, my family and I come in, to help build awareness, to increase funding for more research, to find a cure, because there is no cure. The goal is to put it into remission, but one day, you know, while spreading awareness, perhaps that'll happen. The Histocytosis Association has, the National Institute of Health, is crucial in facilitating research for this disease, and they have designated the month of September as Histocytosis Month. But I would like to thank all of you for joining my family and the histio community and spreading the word and raising awareness on this very important issue. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We wish your granddaughter well.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Best of luck.
Thank you. Best of luck with your efforts.
Thank you.
Rest of your family, please.
Thank you.
And now I've asked Councilmember Stedman to read Resolution 2715.
This is a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, accepting a gift from the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library to the city of Berkeley. Whereas the city of Berkeley has installed a Little Free Library in the city of Berkeley's Kiwanis Totlot, donated by the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library. And whereas Berkeley resident Shirley Hansen spearheaded the project, Councilmember Jack Blanchard constructed the Little Free Library, and the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library supported the effort. Now, therefore, the city of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Berkeley accept the gift of the Little Free Library and assume ownership of the Little Free Library structure. And Section 2, the Little Free Library provided from the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library will be enjoyed by those visiting the Kiwanis Totlot, will provide a great number of literacy opportunities in the city, and will enhance our city park. And Section 3, the city council is grateful to Shirley Hansen, Jack Blanchard, and the Friends of the Library of the Berkeley Public Library for their generous spirit and love of reading that gave this project life.
Oh, honey, have you ever shut me up?
Maybe I better talk. Maybe I better talk. Mayor O'Dwyer, esteemed members of the City Council, and valued city employees, on behalf of the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library, it's my pleasure to gift the Little Free Library at the Totlot to the city officially. As the resolution acknowledges, the handiwork of Councilman Jack Blanchard and the vision and hard work of Shirley Hanson made this gift possible. It's the hope of the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library that other organizations will make similar donations to the city, and we pledge that if those organizations would like, we will give them at least their first set of free books.
Very good. Thank you.
I'd like to add, like I said, you can't shut me up.
I know.
Okay. I'd like to thank Parks and Rec and the DPW for all of their cooperation in picking a spot which is perfect, installation, and I can't thank the community enough. Every time I go to fill it, there's people in the park saying, "Oh, what a wonderful idea." And I think everyone should know that Dan Turbruck's father-in-law has built one, and it will soon be available. And I believe we have other organizations that are on their way. And now I'll shut up.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Shirley. Really good job.
Thank you, Shirley. Congratulations. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Shirley, thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
It's being utilized a lot.
That's good. Yeah, a lot of people over there.
Nicely done. Several of them.
Excellent.
Nicole?
Thank you for your handiwork. And now I've asked Councilmember Blanchard to read Proclamation 0915.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, celebrating the twentieth anniversary of the Tuesday Afternoon Book Club of the Berkeley Public Library. Whereas the Tuesday Afternoon Book Club was established at the Berkeley Public Library by librarian Annette Michka, and whereas the Tuesday Afternoon Book Club met for the first time in October 1995 and has not missed a month since. Whereas the Tuesday Afternoon Book Club has read and discussed 240 books over the last 20 years. And whereas the Friends of the Berkeley Public Library supported the Tuesday Afternoon Book Club for the first thirteen months of existence. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley proclaims, Section 1, the Berkeley City Council congratulates Donna DeBastos, Lilian Greenhut, Net Michka, and Marion Smith as original members who have participated in the group for the last 20 years. The Berkeley City Council praises the members of the Tuesday Afternoon Book Club for their ongoing dedication to books, reading, and fellowship. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, September 21st, 2015, Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here?
Do we have anybody to?
Matt, will you?
Yes, of course.
Yes.
Director of our library?
That's right. Just thank you very much. It's been a fun celebration for them to mark 20 years and just a really great milestone. They'll be having a luncheon to mark the twentieth year next month, so we look forward to 20 more years. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
That's great. Fantastic. Thank you.
Good job, Matt.
Nice to see you.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number two on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M5715, matter of making appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M5715?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Baker, and Mayor Protam supports the motion. Mr. Sessom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under this item, I'd like to identify the names of some individuals. I believe some of them are here for your consideration and appointment to various committees. So would you like for me to go through each of them, Your Honor, or one at a time?
We'll go through them all together.
Okay. All right. Well, the first person that, that under my authority as the city manager, I would like to recommend that the City Council consider Mr. Ross Gavin for appointment to the Downtown Development Advisory Board. Mr. Gavin, he is a new resident to the City of Berkeley. However, he has his experience, his work experience is tremendous, and I think that it will be a great benefit to the DDA. He works for local government as well, and I know that his position in local government will fit in perfectly with the Downtown Development Authority. Council, please know that this interview was also conducted by the Chair of the DDA as well, Mr. Alan Simonions, and both he and I concur with this recommendation. Again, just as a little background, when they ask him the question about his interests and qualifications for this appointment, he indicates that active downtowns help to keep a region vibrant and help to create stable neighborhoods. He says he has a deep interest in downtown development and helping businesses gain access to capital and establish visible or viable business plans. As far as any information that he feels would be pertinent in assisting the Council of this election, he notes that he has a law degree, which has helped him to prepare in, with regards to contract review, and of course, his work in local government. Additionally, he's very much involved with the Michigan Land Bank in redevelopment, and he has had dealings in reviewing DDA and TIF proposals. So with that, Your Honor, I would recommend Mr. Ross Gavin to the DDA Advisory Board.
Thank you.
The next is Mr. Andrew Smith, and he is going to be appointed, or our recommendation is that the City Council consider to the Fun Committee, as I call it.
Indeed.
The Historical Committee. Mr. Smith has been a resident of the City of Berkeley for two years. His occupation is in the area of web development and advertising, and he has over six years in this position. As I mentioned, he's been a resident of our city for two years. And with regards to his interests and qualifications, he simply indicates that he's very interested in getting involved with the Berkeley community and learning much more about Berkeley's history. That is Mr. Andrew Smith. I don't know if he is here with us. There he is. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And then, last but not least, is a longtime contributor to our city, Mr. Dean Smith. And I know I've seen him walk around a couple of times, but he's finally back from China, and I know if you know him, he has been a resident of the City of Berkeley for seventeen years. He, as he indicates in his application, prior to relocating to China for one year, he was an active member of the City of Berkeley's Planning Commission, and he was also Vice Chair of the ZBA. That's the zoning board of appeals. He has much experience working with both boards, and also he believes that his business background will help him when it comes to any issues that come before the board. He also holds a Michigan Residential Builders License, and he has a strong interest in helping to maintain the City of Berkeley as one of the best places to live in the USA. So, Your Honor, with that, those are the three individuals we're recommending for your consideration, and I know that they are all here. And if they'd like to say something before their appointment?
How about Mr. Gavin up first? Introduce himself to the people.
Thank you very much. I just want to thank the Mayor, City Council, city manager, and the DDA Chair for giving me the opportunity to serve in this capacity. Very, very excited to be able to build upon the successes that the city's already seen in the development of its downtown, and very much look forward to working with local businesses and city officials to help continuing to advance the positive progressive leadership that we've seen here in the City of Berkeley under the leadership of this council and the administration. So I would like to thank you all very much. My wife, Ally, and I, who I also want to thank, are very, very excited to be part of the community of Berkeley.
Thank you, Ross. How about Mr. Andrew Smith?
Fun committee. Hello. I'm a new resident to Berkeley, and my wife and I, we moved here about two years ago now, and we've just fallen in love with the city. We really love the, kind of, the small-town feeling that we get from the city, and I'd like to give back to the community, and part of that, is part of my interest of history, is the Historical Committee. So I really appreciate the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to working with Jeff and the other committee members, and, you know, learning more about the city and helping the Historical Committee to, you know, continue the work that they do.
Thank you, Andrew. And Mr. Dean Smith.
Just want to thank you all for letting me come back. Here away has made me really know that Berkeley is the best place in the world, and I'm so happy to be back home and able to again serve the community. Thank you.
We're sure glad to have you back home. You're welcome home, Dean. Any additional discussion on these nominations? Hearing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Kedetl?
Yes.
Mr. Stedman?
Yes.
Turbruck?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Hedger?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you all for volunteering to contribute to the quality of life in our city. It's a wonderful thing. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three?
Resolution Number R2815, matter of approving the contract of Gallagher &amp; Company in a contract with Part D Advisors to provide employee benefit consulting and Medicare Part D reimbursement services for the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R2815?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman, support by Councilmember Kedetl. Mr. Sessom.
You know, Council, we were very fortunate when we went out to request proposals from companies for this type of service, and we received seven amazing proposals, very difficult. I want to particularly thank our Finance Director and my assistant, Darshel Strickland Love, for reviewing these proposals and then narrowing them down. I won't go into great detail. You see in the memorandum that was prepared by our Finance Director all of the processes that we went in order to make this election, to finally, finally come up with this recommendation. But as our Director of Finance indicates, and he states in his memo, with the passage of the Federal Patient Protection and Affordable Healthcare Act, we need to approach healthcare in a very different manner. In the past years, both he and I, I'm pleased to say that I believe that we've done a very good job when it comes to our healthcare, but now because of the many changes, so many of the rules and regulations that are out there, we believe that this agent of record will assist us even further as we move on on this item. Please know that our city attorney has worked very closely with us in the development of this contract. We have also worked very closely with the contractor, and Mr. Subuda has done an excellent job in helping us work throughout this contract. So I'm going to turn it over to him so he can give you a little bit of history. And then also, before we begin, I would like to recognize a few individuals, and they'll come up and they will help us answer some questions. Now, one more thing, Council, because I want to make sure that this is very clear. What we're requesting that the City Council consider this evening are two contracts, but they both deal with the agent of record and with healthcare. So the first is with Gallagher, and then the second is with Part D, Inc. And Mr. Subuda will explain in a little bit more detail as to what these individuals will be doing. Now, for Gallagher, this evening, we have Mary Beth Seeger and Melissa Kavalek, and also DJ McAlun, did I pronounce that correctly? I messed it up, right? Macalun, there you go. Macalun. And then also, for Part D, Inc., we have David Alexander and Andrea Eggersdon, I believe, are here to discuss this. There they are. So these individuals are here and ready to help us answer any questions that the City Council may have. I'll turn it over to Mr. Subuda. David?
Thank you, Mrs. Sessom. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. As you'll recall, we started this process back in May of 2015. We went through the analysis work and determined that the service was required, and we went out for bid for an agent of record health and employee benefit consultant in June, early June, June 3rd of 2015. We received seven bids, and those bids were received on or before 6/23 of 2015, and we opened those bids. We determined at that time that we would interview five of the seven companies. The two that we did not interview, one was a little too small, brand-new. The other one was a little too far away. Geographically, they were just too far away. So we talked to five, and from that conversation, we narrowed it down to three companies. We went and talked to the firm, one of the firms that we thought was the frontrunner, and determined that their price was just a little too high. We tried to negotiate a better price, and they said, "Thank you, but no thank you." From there, we went to the final two, and we came up with a site visit, spent a lot of time at both companies, talked deeply about their processes, their security, made sure there was brick and mortar underneath their proposals, and we determined that Gallagher &amp; Company was the best fit for us. Not only are they in the region, they are, they've been here since 94 in Berkeley, or I'm sorry, in the Southeast Region area. They set up in Bingham Farms in 1994. They've been across the United States and started in 1927. They have seventeen hundred public entity clients across the United States, a hundred in Michigan, and they service sixty out of the hundred. So pretty impressive. They've got some good experience out there. I'd like to, Mary Beth, can you bring your team up? Don, Melissa, come on up to the podium. Mary Beth is the lead. She is the principal.
Hi. Good evening.
When the rubber hits the road, we deal with Melissa Kavalek, and DJ McAlun is my counterpart as the finance person. He runs the numbers for the team. We negotiated a four-year contract. The price was very competitive. They weren't the highest bidder, and they certainly weren't the lowest bidder. Again, it was the best bid, meeting specifications. Their references were outstanding. They also deal with the Berkeley Public Schools, which we thought was a very good opportunity for us. The contract is, what we'll do here is this, is they've quoted a $40,000 a year contract for the first two years. They will be paid commission from the vendors that we receive health benefits from. All those commissions will be represented in a reconciliation period and applied against the $40,000 figure. If the commissions exceed the $40,000 figure, we apply those commissions to the next year. If it is below, we write a check, and we give them the difference up to the $40,000. And this will go on for the four-year period. In the last year of the contract, if we determine that commissions will exceed the contract price, and we're not going to continue for whatever reason, then we lower the commissions in that final year of the contract. I won't go through the exhibits. The first exhibit is the money. The second exhibit is how we calculate. Exhibit B is the money. Exhibit C is how we calculate. We're very excited to have them on our team, and I'd like to open it up at this point in time for any questions that the Council may have.
Any questions, discussion from the Council? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not a question, just a comment. David Subuda and I had the chance at MML to go to a presentation on healthcare, if you remember, David.
Yes, I do.
I don't know how anybody can figure this stuff out. It is ridiculous. We sat there for an hour, and I walked away shaking my head. So I'm glad we've got somebody on board that understands this, because I don't. David probably does a lot better. I don't know anything about it.
What I'm really excited about is we have support. We're out there, we're doing our best. We've been able to manage over the last nine years, ten years with this, and now I have someone that I can go, "Hey, what do you think? You know, what's going on out there? What's the trend?" And I'm not, I'm not getting a free service. I mean, you can only do that once. You can only do that twice. You can't do that constantly. And at the end of the day, it's nice to have a member of our team now where you can run through the scenarios, talk strategy, and come up with a rock-solid plan to deal with going from a large group to a small group in healthcare, dealing with the Cadillac Act. In the last year of the contract, if we determine that commissions will exceed the contract price and we're not going to continue for whatever reason, then we lower the commissions in that final year of the contract. I won't go through the exhibits. The first exhibit is the money, the second exhibit is how we calculate. Exhibit B is the money, exhibit C is how we calculate. We're very excited to have them on our team and I'd like to open it up at this point in time for any questions that the Council may have.
Any questions, discussion from the Council? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not a question, just a comment. David Subuda and I had the chance at MML to go to a presentation on health care, if you remember, David.
Yes, I do.
I don't know how anybody could figure this stuff out. It is ridiculous. We sat there for an hour and I walked away shaking my head. So I'm glad we've got somebody on board that understands this because I don't. David probably does a lot, I don't know anything about it.
What I'm really excited about is we have support. We're out there, we're doing our best. We've been able to manage over the last nine years, 10 years with this and now I have someone that I can go, "Hey, what do you think? You know, what's going on out there? What's the trend?" And I'm not, I'm not getting a free service. I mean, you can only do that once, you can only do that twice. You can't do that constantly. And at the end of the day, it's nice to have a member of our team now where you can run through the scenarios, talk strategy and come up with a rock-solid plan to deal with going from a large group to a small group in health care, dealing with the Cadillac tax, which is going to hit us, which is very expensive if we don't plan now. And also the reporting requirements that are coming up in 2016. The federal government is going to be out there looking at what we're doing with the new 1094, 1095s that are going to all our employees under federal law. And as I've told Melissa, I don't expect you to do the work, but I definitely want to be able to consult with someone to make sure we're on the right path. So again, I'll turn it over to the Council if they have questions.
Very good. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank you guys for the work that went into ensuring that we appreciated the necessity for this and the value that the team will provide. And I'd like to just give you guys a chance to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about the kinds of work that you do and the ways in which you're connected to help ensure that you can bring all that knowledge and expertise to help us move forward.
Great, thank you very much. So I'm Mary Beth Seeger and I've been with Gallagher Benefit Services for 15 years. I've been in the health insurance industry for over 25 years. Melissa Kavalek's been with us for the same amount. She joined me just a week after I joined Gallagher and DJ's been with us for about 10 years now. So we work with public sector, this is who we work with. We focus solely on public entity clients throughout the state of Michigan. And with that, we feel that we have a lot of in-depth knowledge as to what's going on with your employees and in the workplace as it relates to employee benefits. We like to immerse ourselves in your organizations so we tend to go out and be at the MGFOAs and the, you know, City Council meetings and things like that. So you're going to probably see our faces here and there as we begin to work with you. The key areas that we really focus on with the employee benefits, it used to be, as you're saying, Mr. Blanchard, that it was a lot easier back in the day. You know, you just showed up at your employer and they gave you a package and you said, "Thank you very much" and you went on your merry way. Now with all the different legislation that's out there with PAPACA, even in our state of Michigan, we have a lot of legislation that is impacting our employees today with the passing of PA 152. So there's just a lot of moving pieces that employers never had to deal with before that they're now faced with today. So keeping abreast of that, helping them to navigate through the legislative process and understanding what is going to impact us, how does it impact our employees and how does it impact the city overall from a budget perspective as well as from attracting and retaining employees to be here at the city. So compliance is a big, major piece of what we will be bringing to the city. Education is another piece. And so really working with your employees here at the city to help them understand everything that's happening out there. They turn on the nightly news, it's a little scary. You don't really understand what's going on, what does this mean to me? What does it mean to the city? So us educating the employees, working with them to understand that global picture and then also what's available to the city employees here in the state of Michigan. Are you with the right plans? Are you with the right carriers? Is it fitting the needs of your employees? Because everything is changing so quickly. So we're going to continue to have a pulse on that as well. Those are really the two main pieces. We will have your back as, you know, as it relates to the employee benefits package, but really, we're looking forward to building a relationship with the city, with the council members and, most importantly, with the employees who work here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, Councilmember Baker?
I'm probably anticipating exactly where you're going to go. I was curious about the item before us here for the two contracts. Do we vote on them together? And could you kind of explain a little bit about the relationship with Part D Advisors and all that kind of good stuff?
You're half step ahead of me. That's very good.
Perfect.
Okay, so let's go into the second contract. David Alexander and Andrea Eggersen, come on up. So what we have here is, right now, we currently have a Medicare Part D reimbursement program. Through the bid process, the original vendor that was performing this work with us did not receive the bid, so we had to go a little bit different route. The recommended vendor is Part D. You'll, in the resolution that you had before you this evening, you'll approve two contracts, one for Gallagher and then the other one with Part D Inc. Now, what's happening here is we're currently getting reimbursed from the federal government for those prescription drug subsidies for those retirees that are at or over age 65. It's about $30,000 to $40,000 revenue stream for us annually, very important. However, Gallagher affects Medicare D. So if we institute other programs that affect the age 65 retirees, this program will go away. But at a very minimum, we'll have a two-year work window, minimum, okay? Because of reconciliations and past history with prior years of working with the Medicare Part D program. So that will happen and we will need their assistance there. David and his firm have been very competitive in the price and they have also, they work with Gallagher, so there's a nice fit there. And we're excited to have them on our team also because they also bring an audit of benefits, which could increase prior years' revenue streams back to us. Now, we'll have to bring that contract to you at a different time, but for our current open periods, which is calendar year 14 and calendar year 15, they can help us with that. And we're looking forward to increasing our revenue stream through their audit processes. I'll turn it over to, before I go there, it's $3,000 a year fixed fee for the two years. They also get a performance bonus. We're estimating between $800 to $1,500 a year based upon their audit procedures on where they're going, what they're doing. And we'll see how it goes. Maybe they'll be here for four years, maybe they won't. It all comes down to Mary Beth and her team and what we're going to be recommending as we walk through the future. I'll turn it over to Council for questions.
Any additional discussion, questions?
Just to comment. Again, to thank these firms, certainly you all did an amazing job in your presentation. Excellent. We're very glad that they're here. Council, as you can see, or here, I should say, health care issues are not as simple as they were in the past and this is why these two companies are so important to us now. Now, I know David says that he feels like he can now talk to someone else about it, but these are our partners now. This is our extension to our Personnel Department is what I call. I know David and I, we would sit down together and review the plans. The other key thing that's so, so important here is the education side. And I know we've talked about it briefly, but they will send us on a regular basis, both David and myself, information on any legislation that's coming up, anything that we need to be aware of and they will tell us what potential impact it will have. So these two contracts this evening are so important to us and we certainly recommend that you consider them favorably. Again, the city attorney has reviewed both of them and he is recommending that you consider them as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Subuda?
Please know that the Part D Incorporated contract price is appropriated for in this year's budget.
Very good. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you again, Your Honor. I'd like to again thank you guys for coming out tonight and helping a part of the team here and if I may just again ask you or offer you a few moments to introduce yourselves and the nature of the work that you do, the partnership with Gallagher and how you'll be helping with our team.
Sure, I appreciate that. And I appreciate you giving us the time to talk to you tonight. As David said, my name's David Alexander. I'm the Implementation Manager at Part D Advisors. PDA was founded in 2005, the year that the Medicare Part D Drug Subsidy Program came out. So we've been doing this since the beginning. And what we do is we work with municipalities, we work with Taft-Hartley Unions and we work with commercial plans across the country. We're in 30 different states and we actually work with three state-level organizations as well, helping them to get their ongoing retiree drug subsidy and also, as David mentioned, look back at some of the older years and see if we can add some additional value. When you look at the subsidy in terms of, you know, what is the group health plan getting from it, it averages maybe $500 to $600 per year per retiree in this program. So as David mentioned, it's about a $35,000 a year revenue stream for the city of Berkeley. And as we look at the filings that you're making now and the filings that you've made in the past, we see a strong opportunity here for us to partner together to find additional value on these plans, help you secure what you've gotten already and to get as much additional value as you can going forward. Part of our mission is, you know, we want to help the retirees and we want to help them keep these benefits in the changing, you know, world of health care right now. And one of the best ways to do that is to help keep the group health plan, you know, with revenue coming in so that they can support that program. I don't want to take up too much more of your time, so unless you have any other questions, you know, I do really appreciate your time.
Thank you for being here also. And any more questions on this matter? This is a complicated business today. This whole insurance business, it used to be, once upon a time, pretty straightforward. So we are entrusted to manage the people's money wisely and we, as a Council, are very committed to that task. And this seems to be actually a wise expenditure for us so that the policies that our employees receive, that they're very well aware of the implications and the choices they may have as well. And so we're going to value the educational component a great deal. So thank you all for being here, explaining it to us and thank you, Mr. Subuda, and city staff for bringing it to us. If there's no further discussion, then Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R 2815?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Hedger?
Yes.
Cadell?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Thank you. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four?
Number M 5815, matter of authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Hubble-Roth and Clark Incorporated, HRC, to conduct a traffic study for 12 Mile and Robina.
Is there a motion to approve M 5815?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar.
Support.
With support by Councilmember Baker. Everybody is supporting this one. Mr. Sessa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know this is a very exciting project for all of us and I know that we've been looking at this for quite some time. And I know that in particular, Councilman Baker has been very helpful with us, for the city, to us with regards to working with MML. So thank you, Councilman Baker.
My pleasure.
Very, very good. Okay, so I know there's the memo in your packet, giving you a brief summary of all the things that we've done. This is a project that we have looked at very, very carefully and right now, it is part of the Downtown Development Authority and so they will be working with us on this project. It is a very key project for our downtown. And I know that it has been reviewed by several individuals in our city. Finally, we sent it over to our Planning Commission and they made some recommendations. They reviewed the final report that was put together by LSL Planning. But I know that the Planning Commission still had several questions with regards to examining this area. And I know that on June 23, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to review the recommendations from LSL and at the meeting, they identified various issues that they felt that needed to be addressed. And I'll just go over them very briefly, Your Honor, just for the public. They were concerned about alley traffic. They were concerned about the PNC, the bank, drive-through issues. Obviously, they had concerns about loss of parking. They wanted to know who was going to program this space so that it just doesn't sit empty. They were concerned about maintenance costs, traffic on side streets near the alley. They were also concerned about the area sitting empty during half the year, especially during the winter months, loitering in the plaza after hours. So I brought this to the attention of our city planner and one of the recommendations was to go to our engineers, Hubble-Roth and Clark or HRC, to ask for their input as to what type of study we could do. And they came back with a proposal and I do believe it's attached for your review. And we do have our engineer, I hope I don't mess up her name, but Colleen Hill-Stramstak, and I know Colleen, if you don't mind stepping up. But she's one of our engineers for HRC and she is the key developer or preparer for this proposal. And I know that she is ready to address any questions that you may have with regards to this proposal. Now, Council, please know that this item before you has already received approval and they are recommending it now for the City Council as the final approval from the Downtown Development Authority. At our last meeting with the DDA Board, this was approved and now it now needs approval from the City Council. For many reasons, obviously, the cost is a lot higher than the amount permitted, $7,000, so it's over $7,000 in accordance with our purchasing policy. Plus, this is not a budgeted item in this year's budget. So if the City Council approves this finally, then we will be coming before the City Council and request for a budget adjustment so that the funds are due. Sorry? Oh, so our Finance Director has already addressed it, so it'll be in today's agenda. So very, very good. So with that, Council, I'd like to turn it over to our engineer, Ms. Hill, and see if she'd like to just maybe perhaps explain a little bit in terms of what this is doing.
Sure.
One more thing, and I know that it's not in the contract, but I must say this because our DDA wanted to make sure. They are also concerned about crossing. You know, they're glad that this is going to be examined so that we can, you know, address the concerns that were brought forth by the Planning Commission. But one thing that was not mentioned and that was crossing by residents and this may be something that we're asking you to take a look at as well.
That's been in discussion for a while, so yes, that's definitely included, a discussion about pedestrians and access, crossing 12 Mile.
Yes. So I'll turn it over to you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. So the two main issues that were discussed at Planning Commission that really affect traffic were the alleys and where's that traffic going to go from that's currently using Robina and, you know, how is that going to end up being redistributed? Is it going to, you know, are we going to have speeding in the alleys or in the parking lots? And then the pedestrian access. So those were the two main things. And this study looks at the two neighboring intersections, which are going to pick up most of that traffic. So all the traffic count data is too old. And the other thing that we know, if we're trying to put any pedestrian crossing or any issue like that, we're going to have to go to the Road Commission and we're going to have to have data to back it up. So in the past, we haven't had to collect all of the data. Some of the data's been available to us. The data right now is too old. So we're, most of the proposals, going out and collecting that data in the alleys, at the main intersections and then, you know, enabling us to look at pedestrian volumes that are there now and then how that will be impacted.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Hill?
Councilmember Baker? Thank you again, Your Honor. Thank you for helping bring this before both, for all of the Planning Commission and the Downtown Development Authority and then to us tonight. And thank you for the proposal that you've prepared for us and the plan going forward. I do have a question at the end of this brief, a bit of context here, but for those that are less familiar with the general intent of the program here, the city of Berkeley has what's called a master plan, which is a document that describes the overarching vision and intention for where we'd like to take the community. And as part of that master plan, we define and describe the vision for what are called catalytic projects, projects that can, as its name implies, can inject new energy and vitality to our city and to the value and the benefits that our residents and businesses enjoy. This initiative that we're talking about tonight is one of those catalytic projects from our city's master plan. So it's been discussed and viewed by many folks for many years and it's always been a think of, "Well, maybe someday" kind of a thing and now is our opportunity to explore this in particular. And again, the areas that we're looking at are 12 Mile and Robina. As many of you know, we have a tremendous amount of programming that happens throughout the year on the north side of 12 Mile and Robina, that little cul-de-sac there by the old theater and all of that stuff. But the south side of Robina is equally enticing as a way to create a plaza, if you will, like a two-part plaza, north and south kind of thing, with the potential for a connection between the two. And so what I'm really excited about with this is the feedback that we've received from the public, not one year, but for two years running now. We've had displays at the Art Bash to gather information from folks about the area and how it could be, they call it, planners call it activated, how it can be activated to create this new sense of place and destination and you just want to be there, right? And so this is a very important step forward to help us move forward, not just with rose-colored glasses, but also to have a significant fact base so that we can move forward, you know, carefully and thoughtfully. So with that little bit of context, I wanted to again thank you and ask a little bit from a process perspective. Timing-wise, how do you anticipate this? Is this a three-year adventure we're taking on or a three-day adventure? I'm kind of giving you some parameters to play with here. So a little bit about the timing and next steps and where we go from here.
Well, we anticipate, as soon as we get authorized, we can be out counting tomorrow or we can be out counting next week. So it's a quick process. Generally, it's about three weeks to a month to turn it all around. We'll get you a draft and, you know, we'll get that to the city manager and the planner and then the DDA, so then we can go through that process and it's generally about three weeks to a month. If there's a specific meeting that we're trying to meet, we can accelerate that a little bit. We can adjust timelines. That's not an issue.
Thank you.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Not necessarily a question, but...
Not necessarily a question for Colleen, but just, uh, a point of reference. Later on tonight, a meeting we're going to pass, or hopefully pass, our emergency operations plan, and one of the things incipient with emergency operations is planning. And we are now doing a whole lot more pre-incident planning, and I want to make sure that when we get done with the traffic study, that this needs to go to the pre-incident planning team at Public Safety, because although we can count cars, we move cars around here, can we move fire trucks into the place they have to be to get ladders up and to get hoses up to do this? And as I look at, at Robina north of the alley, with what's shown in the picture here, it may be very difficult to move equipment around. So, we need to let our team take a look at this before we make a final decision to make sure, on the configuration of it, to make sure that we can still implement the plans that we've got, in case that we have an emergency downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Just, this, so this traffic study will actually be the, the final, uh, process we're going through before we make a decision.
Uh, may I answer, Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, well, yeah, well, it'll be the, the final in terms of, uh, all the background work, all the research, unless something else, uh, happens, or there's some other questions and with some other areas, I assume that this will be the last.
Mm-hmm.
But then after that, then, uh, we'll have to come and decide which, uh, design are we going to select, uh, identify funds to begin, uh, designing this, and, uh, and that will come before the city council in, in, in the very near future. So, it's, this is, this will be the end in terms of all the study, and then we will, we'll have to make some tough decisions and identify some funding sources. So, yeah.
Very good. Anything else on this topic? It is important that we have data upon which to base our decisions. Data-driven decisions are not always perfect either, but they certainly are a major step forward to more impressionistic kinds of decision-making. Uh, so, I, I'm pleased then that we're doing this, so we will have something tangible to work from. And, Councilor Stedman?
I just wanted to point out one thing, that this project started in two thousand and seven.
In two thousand and seven?
As part of a master plan recommendation.
That's right.
You don't want to rush into it.
Yeah.
Very good.
Clearly. So, it's nice.
But then, if there is no additional discussion, thank you, Ms. Hill, for being here, and Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M fifty-eight fifteen?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M fifty-nine fifteen, matter of approving the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program purchase of a two thousand sixteen Ford F-two-fifty four-by-four pickup truck at a total cost of thirty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars from Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M fifty-nine fifteen?
Move to approve.
Support.
By Councilmember Kadakel, with support by Mayor Protam Turbrack. Mr. Sessom.
Council, I know that the, uh, that our, uh, Public Works Superintendent is, or supervisor, I'm sorry, supervisor is here with us this evening, and, uh, he has been waiting very patiently, so, Mr. Sean Young. I'd like to turn it over to him so he can give a brief summary and recommendation to the city council. I, I want to thank, uh, both him and, and Director Schuler for Public Works, all the good work they've done, and, uh, definitely, this is a, um, a good item, uh, and so, Sean, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Good evening. What you have before you is a recommendation to purchase a two thousand sixteen F-two-fifty crew cab, four-wheel-drive pickup, girls' vehicle, weighs ten thousand pounds. Um, this would be through the Macomb County Cooperative Bid through Sign, with Signature Ford, about the fifth, I believe it would be the fifth vehicle we bought this way. Replaces a two thousand four Chevrolet that was totaled last winter. And we use this truck for a variety, anything from snow plowing to lawn maintenance to street signs, watering brakes, they're pretty general-purpose, they can use for everything. I think that's, that's about it.
Other any questions for Mr. Young? Councilor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. No worry, no hard questions. I, I just want, I just want to make a comment that I, I looked at your selection of additional options, and you think the truck is very well-spec-ed out, uh, the heavy-duty alternator, snowplow, pack, package, all those things are crucial to this kind of an operation when you're operating late at night and in the wintertime, so I think you've done a real good job, and, uh, the only problem is, is a Ford, but I'll let that go, you know? I think a GM retiree.
Very good. Mayor Protam Turbrack?
Um, first a comment, then a question. When your item came up, half the people left, uh, the meeting, Sean, is it, uh, something to do with you coming up? You getting a little self-conscious there?
Wrong the money and everybody leaves.
Such confidence.
Yeah. They, they trust you, no. Uh, my only question is, how many miles were on the, the two thousand forty, you know, before it got totaled? How, uh, how, I mean, it's excessively usage, right?
Probably thirty thousand, that one is, that was kind of the pride of the fleet.
Right.
You know, let's hold on, keep clean, don't, it was our, it was one of our newest pickups.
Thank you.
Very good. Councilor Baker?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for helping oversee this and bring this to us, and I, I just, uh, just a quick comment as well about the, um, the cooperative bid, uh, program. This, I, I appreciate the information that you provided here. According to what you said, this will, this will save the city over thirteen thousand dollars on the purchase of this vehicle, and so I commend you and the team for, for doing that, to doing that research and leveraging that partnership that we have to, to, to bring those savings back to the community, so we can get a well-spec-ed out vehicle at a, at a exceptional price, so, so thank you and, and the team for that.
Thank you. Mr. Sessom.
Just want to comment on, on what Councilman Baker just said. These cooperative agreements definitely help save us a ton of, a ton of dollars. We're very, we all utilize them throughout, uh, various acquisitions of various items throughout the city, so this was a very, very good bid, and, and thank you for mentioning it. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M fifty-nine fifteen?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number six?
Motion number M sixty fifteen, matter of authorizing the mayor and city manager to sign the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen winter maintenance agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty fifteen?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Sessom.
Sean?
Sean, you're back again.
Mr. Young, uh, I, I can, I can tell the city council that this is an annual contract, uh, that comes before you, you are very familiar with this, and, uh, again, the city attorney has reviewed the, uh, the agreement, but I'd, I'd like to turn it over to, to Mr. Young, so again, he can give you a summary of, of what this agreement is all about, and talk to you about, uh, some of the reimbursement the city will receive. So, with that, Mr. Young?
This agreement is, it's a longstanding agreement, we've been doing this for quite a number of years. Oakland County Road Commission pays us to take care of Twelve Mile in the winter. You know, we take care of it above and beyond what their standards are, so it doesn't cover the full cost, but it, every little bit helps. They pay us, you know, nine thousand one hundred and seven dollars and eighty cents this year, uh, which is a little bit less than last year. Last year, typically, it's the same every year. Last year toward the end, Road Commission found a little extra money, so they distributed it to the local municipalities that were involved in this program. Um, you know, they pay us some, they pay us, it looks like thirty-five percent in December and the other sixty-five percent in March, when the season's basically done. You know, this covers plowing, salting, any storm we'll be up to doing.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Young on this one? Councilor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor, a quick question. Is this, this covered both Twelve Mile and greenfield, or just Twelve Mile?
Just Twelve Mile. Oakland County, they, they handle greenfields.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for bringing this to us, and so, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M sixty fifteen?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number seven?
Motion number M sixty-one fifteen, matter of approving the purchase of a diesel exhaust removal system from Hastings Air Energy Control, five-five-five, Southwest Ridge Drive, New Berlin, Wisconsin, five-three-one-five-one, at a cost not to exceed nineteen thousand six hundred and eighty, from account number one oh one, three one zero, nine seven six zero zero zero.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty-one fifteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Sessom.
Council, this is a very, uh, very important item that we're bringing to your attention. Obviously, uh, making sure that we have this system is, is very important, uh, for, for our city, to make sure that we comply with, uh, with all kinds of issues that relate to our, our facility. But I want to make sure that, uh, that this is presented properly, and, uh, I'd like to ask Lieutenant Michael Crum to come before the city council and, and explain, uh, exactly what this is going to do. He, uh, he was the one that, uh, put this RFP together, and went out and received the bids, and made the evaluation. I want to thank him for all his work, this is very good, and, uh, and so here we are. So, with that, Lieutenant Crum, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, city council, we, this was brought to our attention by Stan Tech when they did their municipal building assessment, and as a result of that, we looked at the assessment and started to look at what we could do as a public safety department, and this matter came up, so we, we did some research, we put it in our budget, this is a budgeted item that we presented a few months ago, and then we put that into a RFP and, and presented it to Mitten. We had a sole bid of Hastings Air Energy Control, and they came in slightly under what we had budgeted, so we're happy about the, the amount. Um, if we move forward, they said they can have this installed in four to six weeks, and it comes with a five-year complete warranty, and so we don't have to do any maintenance, any service for five years, uh, on this system, once they install it. Uh, at the end of five years, there's a, a service agreement we can look at or discuss at that time, but for the first five years, everything is covered. This hooks up to our fire trucks. So, the exhaust systems on our fire trucks, obviously, they push out their diesel engines, they push out their, their byproduct. It, this takes it, sends it to the outside. Part of the system, there's a filter, it's a unafilter, it's a filtration system, so when we do send that to the outside, we're not sending out any of the byproduct of that, it, it cleans it and then sends it out into the, the atmosphere.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions? Councilor Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, another important thing that, uh, Mike didn't cover is that this system is used by all of our surrounding partners, so if we have to move trucks to other locations, we can put them in their facilities and hook up to their system, or if they have to bring a truck to our location for an emergency, and they're, we're putting it in the bay, they can hook up to it, uh, immediately. There are, there are other systems out there other than this one. I've happened, over the past weekend, to be talking to a manufacturer of a system that go, that stays on the truck and doesn't, doesn't require a, a fan and a vent and all this stuff, but, uh, after about fifteen minutes of discussion with them, I found out that their system is marginally effective, uh, and this one is totally effective, because this one sucks everything out and puts it outside, so I would, I would recommend that we move forward with this.
Very good. Any additional discussion on this item? Seeing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M sixty-one fifteen?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kadakel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number eight?
Motion number M sixty-two fifteen, matter of authorizing the city manager to finalize and enter into the following agreements as required by the city's fiber optic network installation project. One, the pole conduit and trench use agreement with DTE Energy Detroit, Michigan, estimated annual cost of two thousand one hundred. Second is the state structure access agreement for poles, conduits, and right-of-way with AT&amp;T, estimated annual cost of one thousand two hundred. Fees associated with this project will be charged to account number one oh one, seven five zero, nine eight three, zero zero zero.
Is there a motion to approve M sixty-two fifteen?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman, with support by Councilmember Edgar. Mr. Sessom.
Oh, oh, sorry, I'm not Mr. Sessom.
No, but you had your hand ready to go.
I did, indeed. I was just going to ask, uh, if it pleases the council, um, point of order, I do actually work for DTE, I do not, uh, involved in this department, uh, but I just wanted to, to make that aware, uh, to the organization. If there's any interest in, in me abstaining, I'd certainly be understanding of that.
Does anybody wish to make a motion that Councilmember Baker abstain? Seeing none, then you get to vote.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Mr. Sessom.
Not to the real Mr. Sessom.
Mr. Real Mr. Sessom.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. Um, okay. Now, I'm hoping that everyone recalls the meetings that we've had in the past with regards to our fiber optics, uh, plans. This is part of that, okay? Um, we need you to consider, uh, both of these, uh, agreements, uh, because they're, they're, they're hand-in-hand, okay, basically. Uh, both, uh, these agreements establish the rates, terms, conditions, and procedures for the city to use, uh, also to have access to AT&amp;T's communication infrastructure that includes, but it's not limited to, poles, conduit, and other structures as required for installation and maintenance of the city's, uh, fiber network. Now, I know that the estimates that we gave you for costs, uh, for AT&amp;T, we estimate the, uh, annual cost to be about twelve hundred, and for DTE Energy, about twenty-one hundred. Now, again, these are our best estimates, uh, they could be, uh, higher or lower based on the projected, uh, number of poles that we actually use, so until we do that, we really won't know. Uh, it could be potentially a little lower, or maybe a little higher, but we will bring it to your attention, uh, regardless of what happens, and we'll let you know. Uh, both of these entities have already completed the inspection of the poles. Uh, now, um, at this time, uh, we need to start, uh, working on, on actually, I guess, installing the fiber, and, uh, and here's where we are, and this is what these two And here's where we are, and this is what these two agreements will do. I know that Stan Lisicka, our IT coordinator, Stan, if you don't mind, he will now be the person assigned to, I guess, to head this project. And I know that he's working very closely with Mary Stegner. As a matter of fact, tomorrow, we will again meet with her and get an update on this matter. But from now on, I've appointed Mr. Lisicka to head this project and work with it together with myself and with our staff. So I don't know if you have anything else that you'd like to add, or he will assist me also, Council, with any questions that you may have.
As the city manager has said, the poles have been evaluated. We're ready to actually string the fiber up as long as these contracts are approved, and the actual project itself has started. As far as running the fiber, will take only four to six weeks. So we hope to have it done by the end of the calendar year.
Very good. Any other discussion, Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to make a statement here so everybody knows. People think the Council doesn't do anything. The stuff that the city manager sent us on this item alone was 99 pages long.
Yeah.
I didn't have time to memorize it. I just barely had time to read it.
Okay.
But it's very thorough, and if we don't know about how this works now, we'll never know how this works.
That's right.
Thanks for all the work that you guys do to get us to this point.
If I might add to that, Councilmember Blanchard, the package we received for this meeting was 355 pages. Mr. Sessa?
You know, Your Honor, I can't thank you all enough for your work. I know people don't understand all the work that you all do, but this is what we do, and obviously, you have to review these items. But please know, and we appreciate your support on this. This agreement has been reviewed by legal counsel, and they reviewed each one of these pages. And they have asked, again, or recommended, I should say, from the city council as well. So before any kind of legal document goes before you, staff works very closely with legal counsel, and he reads our contracts. He also reads any RFPs that go before you. And we're just very fortunate to work with both counsel and with our attorney as well. So thank you.
If I might ask you one question?
Sure.
In a couple of sentences, can you explain to the community?
What was in there?
This is a trick.
What fiber optic cable does for us?
Fiber optic cabling, when it's completed, will improve the speed of communication between the buildings. Right now, as far as we are using old copper technology, which we are maxed out as far as speed, the fiber will be, depending on the equipment, anywhere between 100 to 1,000 times faster. So that email, communication back to City Hall, as far as this is where our main servers are, will be almost instantaneous, as in, everybody will be able to enjoy the speed. Right now, City Hall is the fastest because they're housing everything, but everybody essentially will be an equal, even though they're a mile away.
Very good. Thanks.
Public Works, you want to explain?
Yes, Public Works, our financial software, our BSNA software that we use for utility billing, general ledger, payroll, accounts payable. Right now, Public Works, they use three modules. They use accounts payable, general ledger, and utility billing. Twice a month, BSNA, the software manufacturer, sends out updates. Every computer for each module takes 45 minutes per module. And then there's five machines. So literally, they can take an entire day to update where, here at City Hall, it takes maybe five, six minutes? Yeah, it's very, very quick here. So this will, and what I do is I will take it on a flash drive, drive to Public Works, drive to Parks and Rec to do those updates, because it's faster to do it that way than for them to wait and watch the bar slowly trickle by.
Not anymore.
Yeah.
Good. Well, thank you for that explanation. Mr. Suboda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out that, in my opinion, this project is crucial to the operations of the city because of what Mr. Lisicka has pointed out, but also, the payback on this project, four to six years, because we are eliminating other line costs that we communicate through each of the buildings, and also, we are able to bring in the library into our network communication system, which, before, they were coming in over the Internet. Now they have a direct link, and that is crucial, again, to our operation. So payback, four to six years, and better communications between all the departments.
Very good. Thank you both.
We're excited.
Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, then, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-6215?
Cadecle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbra?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number nine?
Resolution Number R-2915, matter of adopting the City of Berkeley Emergency Operations Support Plan.
Is it a motion to approve R-2915?
Motion to approve R-29.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Cadecle. Mr. Sessa.
You know, I know that Councilman Blanchard talked about all the words and all the pages that you have before you, but I'm trying to read how many pages?
112.
112.
I didn't have to read them because I wrote them.
Yes. There you go. So you can see, City Council, that we've put a lot of time into this operations plan. And I know that we've had a work session also with the City Council with regard to this operation plan, so we've gone through it. I know that the city attorney has also made some adjustments to our ordinance so that it also mirrors what the operation plans or EOP, I've got to get used to those acronyms, will do. For the residents out there, I promise I will not read the entire document to you, but it's very, very key. The emergency operations plan, and I know that Mr. Crum is also very, Lieutenant Crum was very instrumental in also assisting us, and my assistant, Darshall Strickland-Love, which I must credit her, there she is, with all her amazing work together, working with Councilman Blanchard. This is very important. How we deal with emergencies is very, very important. And one of the things that we'll do besides updating this plan is that we will all take some training classes as well. We will include the City Council on training, making sure that they too are educated when it comes to our emergency operations plan. And every two years or so, we will come back and take a look at it and make any updates that are necessary. But I would like to recognize them because they've worked hard on this. Ms. Love and Lieutenant Crum, if you don't mind, please approach. The two of you have worked very hard on this, and I know that Councilman Blanchard will agree with me.
Oh, yeah.
They have done a tremendous job, but I can't thank the two of you enough. Darshall, I could not read all those pages that Councilman Blanchard spoke about. But for the viewing public out there, please note that the City of Berkeley has always had an emergency operations plan. And the good news is that finally, thanks to the assistance of Councilman Blanchard, we are now up to date. It has been sent to all the key organizations. They have reviewed it, they have approved it. And as I said, we've had a work session on this with the City Council as well. I've already heard from our DPW director that there are some classes that we may be able to take as well. And let me turn it over to the staff right now, and let them say a few words on what's happening with this EOP. They've worked hard on this. No one wants to say anything, but Darshall, why don't you say something, please?
There really isn't a lot to say.
I've said enough.
No, there really isn't. The one thing that was important for all of us really was to make sure that any revisions that were done to the emergency plan were reflected in the resolution and in the ordinances, largely updating civil defense, which I think is probably, is that a 1920's term?
Yeah.
Making it relevant for today. And it was a pleasure working with Councilman Blanchard and with my buddy over here.
Well, this is a couple, oh, there's a couple of folks here.
Oh, I just wanted to thank them because I know the hours and hours that the three of them put into, not just writing, but going to classes, you know, many, how many hours of classes did you guys take?
I don't know, lots.
I mean, it was just incredible, the amount of time they put into this. And now they have a document that we can all realize it is updated and current with all of our problems of today.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we would go to Lansing quite often, they'd make me drive. I think that's the only reason they had me there, to drive them to Lansing.
Councilman Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to say that we put this together, being an engineer, I don't know much about the English language, and I know numbers, it's all I got, and Darshall did the miracle work. She took all the stuff that we had and made everything fit together and make it say the right thing. And so we provided the ideas, and she put them in a format that was usable, so greatly appreciate what she did. It was a lot of work, but it was...
Well worth it.
Well worth it, yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Baker?
Thank you again, Your Honor. Congratulations to you all for bringing us current and, in many cases, breaking new ground and ensuring that we have appropriate coverage and safety and procedures in place. I think that is absolutely tremendous. If you could just kind of describe a little bit about the next steps, right? So now we have a tremendous amount of material that's been prepared and revised and up to date, and how and in what ways can we ensure that the right people know the right things to do at the right times and all that kind of good stuff? You know, how will we go about, you hinted at it earlier with the training and rollout. Could you elaborate just a little bit more about some of the things that we'll be doing so that the city is prepared for hopefully never needing to exercise this, but if it did, we'll know what to do?
In general, the plan is for internal use, is not necessarily a plan that we would tell the residents to do anything.
Of course.
It is what the city would do if there was something, some major catastrophe that happened in our space here. The one thing that we have already done is set with all the directors and talked through each section of the document, asked questions, clarified things, so that we're all on the same page, and I think we all kind of know what the other is responsible for doing. The next steps would be to fill in some of the blanks. There's some things that we, some connections that we need to make with some human services organizations, since we are not a human service entity, like, for example, connecting with the Red Cross or Salvation Army.
Right.
And then there's others that have more to do with how we connect with Oakland County and the state if it gets to that, if it escalates to that level. So there is still some reviewing that needs to take place and some ongoing training that some of us, if not all of us, will take. But then there's still those connection points that we've got to make sure that we keep the points connected, if that makes any sense.
Right. Thank you, absolutely. That's fantastic.
Excellent. Councilmember Edgar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there any coordination with other communities that we all kind of have the same working plan, idea, steps to take?
That's an interesting question. If we are affected by an incident and the surrounding communities are affected by the same incident, everybody's going to be using their own resources. However, to the extent that a neighboring city is not involved in whatever the incident is, we may take advantage of some mutual aid activities. I know that that automatically happens with public safety, when we get low on manpower, we got a lot going on in the street. And even with the flood, the City of Southfield helped remove some debris from the streets. So that's all built in into the plan.
Great. Thank you.
Plus, the county plan will have regional application as well, and we feed into the county plan, I'm assuming.
Well, the thing is, is that if our resources are tapped out, we will depend on the county to come and help us with resources.
That's right.
So that is already in it. It's called the Support Plan to the Oakland County Plan, so I think that's where you're going with it.
Exactly.
So we are there.
Exactly.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to just a comment. There are two major agreements, one of which we passed at the last meeting, which was the DPW Mutual Aid Plan, where our DPW provides equipment list to other DPWs in the area, and we get their equipment list, so we all know who has what in case of emergency. And then on the public safety side, it's MABUS 3201, which, Mike, you might want to explain a little bit about, since you haven't said anything yet.
So close. Almost made it. MABUS 3201 is an Oakland County agreement. It's a Michigan box alarm, so if we have fires, we call out for extra trucks or extra personnel to help us on the fire side. They will also come to our station. So if both of our trucks go to an incident in Berkeley, another station or another city will bring a truck to our city in case something else happens, which goes back to our exhaust system being interchangeable. On the police side, we have, we came to you with OCTAC a few months ago, and it's the same kind of agreement for the law enforcement, is OCTAC, and MABUS 3201 is for the fire side that we do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sessa.
Council, I'd also like to mention that our lieutenant here is also responsible for making sure that all our public safety officers have all the proper training. He has that all scheduled to make sure that all of them are up to speed on the various classes that they must attend. Also, our DPW workers as well are required to attend some emergency operations classes as well. It's very, very good. And very soon, he will also be working with myself and my assistant in making sure that the rest of us as well have a plan and classes that are available to us as well. So I'm anxious to hear that as well. Thank you, Lieutenant Crum.
Thank you. I know that when I attend the National League of Cities Conference every year, there's an increasing focus on this kind of management plans. And so we have always had an emergency management plan, and these plans need to continuously be updated. And what we have accomplished this time is the latest version of that ongoing plan, and I'm hoping that in five years' time, when that's reviewed in close detail, it will be improved again, because that is the challenge for all of us, to improve the safety and our responsiveness to the needs of the residents. So thank you all for what you've done to bring us to this place. And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R-2915?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbra?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Cadecle?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 10?
Ordinance Number 00515, matter of amending the Chapter 38 Civil Emergencies of the Berkeley City Code to modify regulations relating to emergency preparedness. Second reading set date certain, October 5, 2015.
Is it a motion to approve Ordinance 0515?
Motion to approve Ordinance 0515.
Support.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Sessa.
So, Council, this is the second part that we talked about. You have now approved the emergency operations plan. Now here is the ordinance that will help us administer this plan accordingly. We have also had a work session on this item. I don't know if that our legal counsel, Mr. Chris, would like to comment on this.
Well, through the chair, very briefly, this proposed ordinance amendment has been reviewed. As the mayor has indicated, the emergency management plan has been in effect, but the current City of Berkeley ordinance was last amended in 1981, and so this is an update to bring it in alignment with the proposed emergency operation plan that you're approving by resolution this evening.
Thank you.
And, Council, please know that this is just your first reading. We will have a second reading at the next council meeting. So thank you.
Very good. Any additional discussion on this? Seems clear cut. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on Ordinance 0515?
Terbra?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Cadecle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 11 on tonight's agenda?
Motion Number M-6315, matter of casting Berkeley's official vote for the following to serve as Board of Directors for the MML Liability and Property Pool, directing the city clerk to send in the marked ballot, vote for two incumbent directors, terms beginning January 1, 2016.
Is it a motion to approve M-6315?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Edgar.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Sessa.
Council, as you all know, we are members of the MML Liability and Property Pool, and as such, we are required to vote for individuals that are interested in becoming or being part of the board. Today, we are asking the City Council, consider Mr. Robert Clark. He is the mayor of the City of Monroe. He has served as a municipal official for more than six years and is mayor of the City of Monroe for, or since 2010. Next, we have Ms. Paula Zelenko. She is the mayor for the City of Burton. She's also served for more than 21 years as a municipal official and has been the mayor of the City of Burton since 2010. We are asking that the City Council consider voting for these two individuals. Of course, they also indicate that if anyone wishes to recommend a writing candidate, such as anyone here, you may do so as well, Your Honor. So these are the two people, and we definitely recommend them for your consideration.
Very good. Thank you. Is there any volunteer that wants to be written in? Hearing no rush to be written in, then I think it is safe to say that, Ms. Boucher, you could call the roll on M-6315.
Baker?
Indeed, yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Cadecle?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbra?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number 12?
Resolution Number R-3015, matter of authorizing amendment of the 2015-2016 operating budget, those operating funds as presented.
Is it a motion to approve R-3015?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Cadecle, support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Sessa.
Council, as you will know, it is very important to make sure that our finances are kept intact and that they are done in accordance with various state rules and regulations. Now, these amendments that are being presented to you are for fiscal year 2015-16 and will include any carryforward appropriation amendments from fiscal year 2014-15 into 2015-16. This is also done in accordance with state law. This is to be in compliance with Public Act 2 of 1968 as amended. Now, I'll turn it over to our finance director, Mr. David Suboda, to go over each of these items with you. Mr. Suboda?
Thank you, Mrs. Sessa. Good evening again, Mayor and City Council members. You have 10 amendments before you. Four of them are carryforward amendments. What that means is we're bringing appropriation in from 1415 into 1516 because the appropriation was not utilized in that fiscal year.
Right.
First item, Item A, I'm sorry, in total, you'll have revenues of $103,000, and you'll have expenses or new spending of $90,541. First item, Item A, I'm sorry, in total, you'll have revenues of $103,000, and you'll have expenses or new spending of $90,541. So, and the first item that you had before you, Item A, is we're bringing forward appropriation from 1415 into 1516 for vehicles. And the Public Safety Department, we're, these are funds that are used to change out and to make the cars police cars. So the new equipment that is added on. So that's $11,500. Item B is $5,600, which is to purchase a trailer to carry the roads, the road division's saw that cuts the cement in the streets, $5,600. The third carryforward amendment, $101,443 in revenue. What that is, is that's the federal dollars that are remaining to come to the City of Berkeley for the 8/11 flood event. We've received to date $350,000, including insurance proceeds. We're looking for the final $101,000 installment. The last carryforward amendment is in the DDA for LSL planning, to do the Robina Plan. It's the final piece of the engineering study, I'm sorry, the architectural study that LSL did, $1,235. Now, we're getting into the current year's budget as far as dealing with the current year appropriation. We have a federal grant that Mrs. Boucher received, $2,585 in revenue. We're going to purchase voting booths for disabled individuals. We'll spend $2,585 plus postage for another, for a total of $2,765. The next item is medical expenses. We have to hire three public safety officers. We had appropriated for one. We have to appropriate for three more. We'll need another $3,500 to cover that cost. That would be coming from the fund balance of the general fund. With the retirement of the, of the, Item G, with the retirement of the incumbent IT, not IT coordinator, the communications coordinator, we are looking to amend the budget downward to fund the new position for communications coordinator, and to also pay for CMN services. And with that net effect, we'll have $1,056 of additional expenses. The Water Sewer Fund, this is the biggest one, it's kind of caught us by surprise a bit. We're putting a lot more money into the water system, and we are looking to spend an additional $50,000 in program supplies for the water infrastructure, $50,000, and then $250 for telephone costs. That'll all be capitalized and depreciated over the life, useful life of the purchases. That will come from the fund balance of the Water Sewer Fund. Item I, vehicle maintenance, we've had some expenses on the smart buses that we need to perform, $3,000 in additional funds that will come from the fund balance of the Senior Recreation Fund. And the last item, as was passed this evening, the engineering for the Robina Project, that was item number four on the agenda, $12,100. I'd open up the floor for any questions, Your Honor.
Any questions for our finance director? A lot of housekeeping and keeping the accounts up to date.
Yes, sir.
Is essentially what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
Very good. We thank you for your attention to those kinds of details. It's very important that we manage our finances with precision, and you certainly do that.
Thank you, sir.
So we thank you. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on R. 3015?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Edgar?
Yes.
Cadecle?
Yes.
Steadman?
Yes.
Terbra?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, we come to the communications portion of tonight's meeting. And Ms. Boucher, who's up first?
Councilmember Edgar.
Councilmember Edgar.
I'd like to thank our volunteers who were appointed this evening, Dean Smith, Andrew Smith, and Ross Gavin. We couldn't do what we do without our volunteers. I'd also like to thank the city for allowing me, along with the Honorable Mayor, Honorable Councilwoman Eileen Steadman, and Honorable Steve Baker, councilperson, to attend this year's MML Conference in Traverse City last week. It was exciting. It was educational. We heard from various municipalities, city officials, and representatives on so many exciting, rewarding, current issues and hot topics, such as roads, design construction, transportation, public art projects. It was my first conference as a councilperson, and I learned so much. And the weather wasn't bad in Traverse City either. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Cadecle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank the volunteers, but in particular, Mr. Dean Smith. The zoning board has missed your knowledge, your wisdom, and even your humor, so we welcome you back, and I look forward to the next meeting with you there. Welcome home, Josephine. Glad to see you back in the audience here. We've missed you, and I'm glad you're doing so well. We had the back-to-school rally that the Berkeley-Hinton Woods Youth Assistance put on. I mentioned we were going to have it at the last meeting, and it was a great success. People, a lot of people attended it. Organizations throughout the community were there, and it really enabled the residents and the school district people to realize, you know, how many great organizations we have here, and it worked out well. The Ice Cream Social, again, my hats off to the Parks and Rec Department. They did a great job to end Summer Fest. I want to wish Happy New Year to all of those that are celebrating it, and wish everybody an easy fest, starting tomorrow at sundown, going till Wednesday at sundown. For those of that fast, I wish you an easy fest. And all I'll say is, congratulations, Mr. Mayor. To be continued.
Mr. Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you. I feel like my colleague and I were planning this together, because a couple of things that I have planned here, he just mentioned, but I want to bring them up again. With summer officially, officially for students, over, I want to wish all the students a good luck on this school year, but also the teachers. Teachers are also very excited to have their summers over and be back to work. I understand what it's like. It is not an easy task, and I can tell you that teachers, in my experience, work extremely hard and do all that they possibly can for these children, for our children. And I don't say that just because my wife is a teacher, but for all of the teachers. It's incredibly important, and I wish them all a good school year, and all those students as well. I do want to also thank the Parks and Recreation staff specifically. You know, the summer, you're talking about teachers. Summer is typically a time for many, for relaxation, you know, leisure time, taking vacations, hanging out with the family. But for our Parks and Rec staff, that's the opposite. They put on these Summer Fest events that take an incredible amount of planning, preparation, and execution to pull off. And anybody who attends those events, you realize that, but now that we've gone through yet another summer. And we don't often mention it up here, and actually, we probably don't talk about it much, but I'm sure you're all aware that there has been some turnover in the Parks Department recently, over the last number of months. And the department has not missed a beat throughout any of that, throughout any of the difficulties, working through those. Just absolutely tremendous employees, tremendous volunteers, a tremendous advisory board. And, you know, we are very lucky to live in a community that has a department that is as vibrant and as active and cares as much about its residents as our Parks and Rec Department does. And, you know, we often thank them after each event, but with everything over with now, and moving into, you know, the fall, I just wanted to thank them personally, for me, and I'm not speaking for my colleagues, but I have a feeling they agree with me, for everything that they have done. I know my family is able to take part in tremendous events, and it's because of the work they do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things. Hello again, everybody. Let's see, our Berkeley, the Downtown Development Authority, DDA, met recently. As we heard earlier in the agenda tonight, they continue to make progress with the Robina Plaza Initiative. I'd like to thank my colleagues here, and for all of those involved in helping thoughtfully discuss the opportunities and the potential for what this placemaking event could do for us as a community. And again, to all the volunteers and business owners that have helped, again, deliberate and continue to advance a meaningful plan for us to consider here. And to welcome aboard Ross, I'm glad that he's joined the DDA to help continue in those thoughts, not only for the Robina Project, but for the entirety of the downtown district. I think that's fantastic. Secondly, as was mentioned during the citizens' comments, the Historical Committee invites you to enjoy the recent exhibits and additions to our delightful museum. For those of you in City Hall, it's just down the hall and around the corner, and around another corner, and another corner, and another corner. And I think another corner.
You'll need those chairs to sit down.
Or you could just go outside and go around. But it's a fantastic exhibit. Again, thank you to the tremendous partnership between the business community, our Public Works, city administration, and the tremendous volunteers that do so many great things. It's just the latest in a recent, in a long series of successes that the Historical Committee continues to bring to our community. And I want to thank again Andrew for joining the team as well, to help be a part of this crew, and help to preserve and promote our city's history as we continue to move into the future. And finally, it was the Irish playwright George Bernard Shaw, who once said, "I am of the opinion that my life belongs to the community, and as long as I live, it is my privilege to do for it what I can." Again, the Irish playwright George Bernard Shaw. "I am of the opinion that my life belongs to the community, and as long as I live, it is my privilege to do for it whatever I can." And our mayor, the Honorable Dr. Phil O'Dwyer, I believe, has a similar philosophy to that of Mr. Shaw. As was alluded to, our mayor was recently inducted into the Michigan Irish American Hall of Fame. He is only one of five residents in the entire state to receive this recognition. It's a program that is very careful and thoughtful in who they bring into their esteemed halls of tribute and recollection and advocacy, and we're very thrilled to have him with us. The inductees come from a particular category. There is a theme or way in which they contribute that they're being recognized. Those categories are in education, business and industry, arts and entertainment, and public service. And Phil was represented on behalf of the public service category to not only Berkeley, but to the region and the state. The ceremony was last Saturday in Muskegon as part of the Michigan Irish Music Festival at Heritage Landing. And I know I speak on behalf of our colleagues and the residents of the city, and expressing our deep appreciation and gratitude for all that you do, and congratulations on such a tremendous accomplishment. It's fantastic.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. I am humbled by this honor. And when you look at the list of people who have made this Hall of Fame, people like Henry Ford, Attorney General Frank Kelly, and with me this time was Supreme Court Justice Kavanaugh, Father Solanas Casey from the Capuchin Soup Kitchen, of course, posthumously received that award. It is a very humbling thing, and I am thankful, first of all, for the people of the City of Berkeley electing me to be the mayor of this city, and for the Board of Directors of the Michigan Irish American Hall of Fame for selecting me. And I'm thankful for the support, ongoing support of my colleagues, all the commissions of the city, all the people of the city who worked to make this a fantastic city. We work in harmony, trying to avoid divisiveness, personal agendas, negativity. And when you can accomplish that, you can become the 28th best place to live in America. And I'm thankful for everybody's participation in that. But I need to pass it along to Councilmember Steadman. Who's next up?
Boy, that's tough to follow. The Beautification Committee, their next meeting is Wednesday, October 14th. They did not, were not able to meet in September. But in August, they planted flowers and so on around the Woodward Welcome to Berkeley sign. And they're planning tentatively getting together and splitting hostas for the Coolidge Media on Saturday, October 10th. I'll let you know if anything changes with that date, but, so, they will meet again on October 14th. Berkeley Public Library, so much to report on the Berkeley Public Library. The programs in September, first one is tomorrow, Tuesday, September 22nd, at 6:30. And this is a presentation entitled, "Why Do We Love Sherlock Holmes?" And they're doing a presentation covering the history, scientific methods, influence, and popularity of the world's greatest detective. The presenter is Regina Stinson, who founded the Ripstone Pippins Society for the Baker Street Irregulars. Okay. Anyways, that is tomorrow night at 6:30. So if you want to go to that, you should call the library and sign up. Family movie night, September, Saturday, September 26th, actually, it's not movie night, it's movie afternoon, at 2:00 PM, and they're doing Star Wars, The Clone Wars. And then, a family concert with Beverly Meyer, which is Tuesday, September 29th, at 7:00. And she is a music lady, and she'll bring her interactive performance with family favorites to the library. And this is an entire family event. And that, again, is September 29th at 7:00. There are fall storytimes throughout September, October, and November. I'm not going to read those all to you, but you should check online, and if you're interested in storytimes for you and your child, please look it up online and find out what is happening. On August 24th, the library participated in the Youth Assistance Back-to-School Rally. It was at Berkeley High School. It was the first time they've ever done this, in attempt to connect with the new high school students and their parents, and returning high school students and their parents, and different organizations in the community that were there to introduce themselves. And hopefully, this will be an annual event. I worked with Matt Church from the library. He and I manned the table for the library that night, and it was very nice and very The Friends voted to review the library's license to screen movies at the library. They originally did this for a three-month period of time, but it was so successful, they've decided to renew that, so there will be movies at the library, preview movies at the library. And they're going to have their fall book sale on Friday, October 23rd, 24th, and 25th. This is their biggest fundraising event, and this takes place at the library, and both hardcover and softcover books are welcome. So you can start donating, I think. Yeah, anytime. It's almost October. I also attended the Michigan Municipal League Convention, and this convention is, or this league is really quite an outstanding organization. It's one that many Michigan municipalities belong to, including Berkeley, and it fulfills many, many roles, including education, and at the annual convention. But besides the annual convention, which was held in Traverse City this year, there's also many opportunities for workshops throughout the year. And the league advocates for communities in Lansing, in Washington, DC, and also in the courts. We were welcomed at the opening session by the mayor of Traverse City, Michael Estes, Second Vice President of the National League of Cities, Matt Zone, and Dick Boland, MML President. They basically talked about the many accomplishments over the past year. Matt Zone of the NLC picked Detroit to work with because of the confidence he has in its possibilities. He is actually from Cleveland, but has a great deal of confidence in Detroit's ability to return to its past greatness. We then saw four presentations for the Community to Excellence Awards. One of these presentations was done by our very own Steve Baker, along with four other communities. I was going to have him talk, I was going to mention that he was going to talk about it, but he says he's not. So I'm going to mention it, okay? While we did not win this award, it was just such an outstanding thing for our city, along with the rest of the Woodward Five, to be recognized at a state convention after being voted upon by hundreds and thousands of people around the state, that we were able to make the final four. This is a Transforming Woodward Together. I'm sure if you'd like to see it, that Steve has a lot of them, but this was the project, and it was the Woodward Avenue Project that you've heard a lot about in recent years. They've been working on it for quite a while. And I have to say that Councilwoman Baker, and I heard this from the other people presenting with him, was the driving force behind starting this activity. So, other things that came up there was technology in municipalities is a very important topic. And in Berkeley, we're well on our way to everything about technology. We just approved our fiber optics tonight. The importance of this was discussed at length in Ask Siri, one of the workshops that was moderated by Steve Baker. And I believe from listening... And I believe from listening to the people in that workshop that we are way ahead in terms of technology of many other cities in the state. Another thing that had just been legislated last year at this time was crowdfunding, and it's a way to fund a business or event with donations from a lot of small donors instead of having to look for a large investor for any startup business you wanted to open. And it was good to see that it's gaining traction, and it's gaining traction throughout the state, and is helping out small business growth. Other topics were clean energy, road funding, impact of Supreme Court rulings, which has a tremendous impact on what's happening to municipalities and cities around the state. Placemaking, arts and theaters, just to name a few. So all in all, it was a wonderful week. It was wonderful weather. It was 80 degrees in Traverse City. Nobody expected that. So it was very nice that I was able to go. Thank you.
Thank you. I always felt that Siri knew everything, but what I didn't know is Siri is Steve Baker.[1036.47][1036.47](Laughter).
It's a voice modulator going on in there.
That's right. Councilor Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to thank Commander Tom from the American Legion. He stole part of my thunder. I was going to talk about the burning of the mortgages tonight, but thanks for coming, and feel free to come back and keep us updated on what the American Legion is doing, because it's an integral part of our community. The other thing is, the Chamber of Commerce is going to sponsor the 2015 State of the City presentation. That will be held on Friday, October 15th, at Farina's, from 11:30 to 1:30. The Chamber will be presenting awards to the Business Person of the Year and the Business of the Year, and they're taking nominations for those things right now, and they'll take nominations through Friday. So if you have somebody you'd like to nominate as a Business Person or as a Business of the Year, contact the Chamber of Commerce at www.berkleychamber.com. Tickets for the event, as I said, is October 15th. Tickets are $20 until October 13th, and then $30 after that date. So if you're going, get your tickets early. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sessom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to also recognize, excuse me, if you, if you're the presenters, I'm so sorry. Excuse me. Historical Committee, I know that I call them the Fun Committee, but I want to remind everybody that after the meeting, to please go visit the Historical Committee and look at the new theater doors that have been installed. I know that Jeff Tong, who has a great love for the museum, has done an amazing job, so please, after the meeting, let's go take a look at his work. He's done a great job. So Jeff, thank you so much for everything you do.
I'm just having fun.
Having fun. The Historical Committee.[1151.33][1151.33](Laughter). Oh.[1153.33][1153.33](Laughter). I'd also like to, again, thank STANTEC. They did an amazing job for our community, all the work they did throughout our parks. Tremendous. I know that our staff wasn't able to be here this morning, or this evening, but they did ask me to express their appreciation. I know that the interim director, Teresa McCarleton, had some family issues, but she wanted me to say to the city council that she was very appreciative for all their work. And then, of course, Dan Simpson, for all his amazing work in coordinating with STANTEC to get all this done. So again, I'd like to personally recommend, or thank them for their hard work. So thank you very much. And I too would like to express my congratulations to Mayor O'Dwyer for such an outstanding honor, Your Honor. It, you know, I know that we've gone to a couple of events, and when I tell people that you're receiving this award, you know, they indicate that it's not easy to receive this, so congratulations. And the city is very fortunate to have someone of your caliber be our mayor, so thank you, sir. Thank you for all your work. Thank you. And before I close, you know, I know that many of you are aware that I have accepted a position with the city of Pontiac, which means that my tenure with the city is coming close. I'm working currently to determine my last day as your city manager, and I will share that with you as soon as I can. You know, please know that I am so grateful for the opportunity to serve the residents of Berkeley for these last 14 years. I can't believe it's been 14 years. They went by so fast. I work with the Winnie... Anyways, I'll be here for the October city council meeting, and maybe one more. I'm not sure, again, looking at the time, because I did promise the city council that I would not leave until at least 30 days, and to try to get many things completed before I leave. So at that time, I will, I'll save my farewells till then, and especially to my wonderful staff. And to others, I know I don't, I'm gonna start to go, (Laughter), to have supported me over the years. But I'll wait. I'll wait until then. It's not time yet to express the appreciation. There's so many people that I need to thank. So I'll leave it at that for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Subouda.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to let the council know that in accordance with state law, our independent audit will be starting October the 5th, 2015, and they'll be here for about 30 days. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Ms. Boucher.
It's a long list.[1352.78][1352.78](Laughter).
Thank you, Mayor, city council, and city manager. I just wanted to give you a couple of updates on the election coming up. Tuesday, September 22nd, is the National Voter Registration Day, celebrating the democracy in America. Tuesday, November 3rd, is our local general election. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Monday, October 5th, is the last day to register for the November general election. Saturday, September 19th, military and overseas absentee ballots were sent out. Mass absentee ballots will be sent out this week for all other voters who submitted a ballot application. September, I'm sorry, Saturday, October 31st, is the last day to send out absentee ballots through regular mail by 2:00 PM. The city clerk's office will be in the office from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So those that would like to apply, please come in and visit us. Monday, November 2nd, is the last day to issue absentee ballots. Voters must vote at the city hall until 4:00 PM. And the election information is available at the city website at www.berkleymish.org, or at the state of Michigan website at www.michigan.gov/vote. Please contact the clerk's office at 248-658-3310 with any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney.
Very briefly, Your Honor. Early this evening during citizens' comments, there was a concern raised regarding the status of certain property on Buckingham.
Yes.
I intend to contact code enforcement, speak with them this week about some of the ordinances and tools that code enforcement has available to abate that condition, and I'll make sure that the city manager has kept abreast of what the status of that is.
Very good.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you very much. I have just a couple of items. First of all, I'd like to welcome to our city Pastor Ron Strobel, who will serve the faith community at Keanaluthen. I think he was installed yesterday as their new pastor, and he's brought his family, moved his family here to Berkeley. So we look forward to his ministry at Keanaluthen and his service to the entire community here in Berkeley. I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Baker on his term of office on the Board of Directors of MML. They have come to a close. Four years of dedication to a very critical organization in the state. He has made an exceptional contribution during his tenure. And the folks at MML are pretty bright people, and they weren't about to let him go quite so easily. So they appointed him as a trustee of the board overseeing the Elected Official Academy. The Elected Official Academy is an initiative by MML to help aspiring municipal candidates to be prepared for the task of leading a community. And so Steve will be on the faculty and on the board of that important group, and no one could do a finer job. The inspiration of your own contribution to our city leads us to conclude that you will be an excellent model for them.
Thank you.
The city manager's announcement leaves us with a decision to find a replacement. And so I would like to, this evening, appoint a search committee comprised of the council members, Mayor Protem, Dan Terbrack, Councilmember Steve Baker, and Councilmember Jack Blanchard. And we will entrust to them the task of moving the project forward, and they will bring back to us recommendations and good guidance, and we trust the process to bring to us a city manager that in turn will have excellent financial management skills, superb interpersonal skills, and a progressive vision to continue moving our city forward. And so we thank each of those for volunteering to undertake this task on behalf of the council. And then finally, I'd like to thank Steve Baker for his kind comments regarding the induction into the Hall of Fame. I tend to hear the sound of two different drums. The melody of a rich heritage and the enduring call to not stop thinking about tomorrow. And that remains our remit here as a council, to continue to think about tomorrow, to make decisions that secure the future of our city, enhance the quality of life for our community. And I believe we have a superb team on that task, from the Planning Commission, the ZBA, the DDA, right across the board, plus all our employees who are so dedicated to the task of serving the community with dedication, and I'm grateful to all of them. And the volunteers we appointed tonight, again, continue that, and it's great to see Dean Smith back in harness again after he's so adjourned in China. I'm sure the folks in China benefited from your teaching there, Dean, but we are certainly glad to have you home. And on that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kiddekel. Support by Councilmember Stedman. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Edgar?
Yes.
Kiddekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thanks for your kind words.